This conference will now be recorded.
Planning and zoning meeting, May 21st to 2024. Roll call, please.
Member DeBette?
Here.
Member Barbara?
Here.
And Mr. Ferber?
Here. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
A public comment.
May I ask if I should wait for the item number three, or which is the House review?
Yes, there'll be public comment after the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Terry, you know.
No, I'm going to break you in.
Okay. Oh, boy, wow. Thank you, appreciate that. It's all nice of you, okay. Approval of the minutes of April 16th, 2024. We're here, motion to approve the minutes.
I just want to make a quick comment at the top of the minutes. I don't think we have the wrong heading, so that will be changed on the minutes as well.
Oh, from March 26th?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion action items, selection of a chairman and vice chairman.
Yes, every year when we appoint new members, we then go through the process of appointing a chair and a vice chair. It can be the same one, they can be different ones. It's totally up to you. I've got ballots. Go ahead and vote. We'll vote for the chair, and then we'll vote for the vice chair. I will pass the ballots after.
Thank you.
It's open.
Okay. Open.
Want me to fill yourself?
Please, can you?
Okay, two to one right now. We have Shields Ferber for chair. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Now we'll vote for vice chair.
We've really gone a way, a long way into this. Oh, and? No, we can do one more for vice chair now.
Okay, we've got a two to one for Mr. Ken Collier for vice chair.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Awesome. He doesn't have to be here in Queens, right? It's great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. Okay, moving on. The item number three, quasi judicial hearing, the development plan review for Three Hudson Avenue, right? The proceedings are now called order on agenda item number three, okay? At this time, any ex parte communications should either be disclosed by identifying the subject of the communication and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, or any correspondence to be provided to the town clerk and made part of the public record. In addition, each member of the commission may identify the existence of any investigations or site visits he or she has conducted, or any expert opinions received, and disclose any conflicts of interest in this matter. Everyone, good morning, Ken.
Good morning. I apologize for being late. I'll blame you.
You're now your vice chairman, so congratulations. Okay, you won, all right.
That's what happens.
We're hearing nothing from the commissioners? No? No ex parte communications? Well, okay, we'll then proceed with the hearing of this matter. Will the clerk please swear in the witnesses?
While one wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you have been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
We'll have the town staff make their presentation, please. And Corey, could we start with you, please?
Mr. Good morning, Chair. Board members, Corey O'Marman, Town Planner. This is the development plan review for the new home at Three Hudson Avenue. This was for a chair meeting last month with a recommendation from approval from the staff with some minor conditions. During the review, there were some comments and suggestions made by the planning and zoning board that asking the applicant to consider them as part of their design, and the item was tabled until today's meeting. I have no further analysis on the project that is recommended for approval by town staff. The changes that were made to adjust, to address the commission's comments don't have any impact on the staff review.
Okay, and we can review those directly with the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Wonderful, thank you. Tara's not here yet, right? So we'll go to Manny, your report, please. Town, the zoning official.
Manny Glass is only an officer of the town.
Can you put the ocean ridge? Got to make it red.
No, 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 it's buttons. Hi, Ted. Yeah. Doing office, officer of Ocean Ridge. I'm giving a review of the revised and middle concurs of the planner's view of his submitted.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go, let the applicant come up at this point. We're waiting for Terry.
Good morning, everybody. Richard Brummer with Bella Homes team, presenting Three Hudson Avenue. We were here a month ago, and we had some recommendations from the board and also comments from the public regarding some, you know, changes that we need to, or that were suggested to introduce to this property to get our approval and to be more aligned with the neighborhood that we're, you know, designing this house. So we went ahead and, you know, we studied a couple of areas, which changed a little bit of the design concept of the house to reduce, one of the biggest, I would say, one of the most comments that we had was about the mass of the house. Those big parapets with blank walls with no treatments and things of that nature. So we ended up changing a little bit the concept of the parapets, and we added hip roofs to the house, you know, reducing the amount of parapets on the design. I want to start pointing also, you know, I would like to start with the side plan. There are some minor changes on the side plan on the northeast side of the house. We had some intricate, you know, jogs into the house. We simplified that.
What plan are you on, please?
On side plan, SB 1.
Okay.
If you look at the office, the northeast corner, the original plan had some jogs and cantilevers on that corner. We reduced that. We made it much simpler with a nice planter in the front to basically take some of that, you know, intricacy and volume that we were reducing there. In addition, we added more glass into that volume that we have on the northeast and northwest side, the garage side, mostly because, you know, our elevations were predominant obstacle with some, you know, scoreline treatments, but we added now the windows to break that, those massive walls. Continuing with, you know, the next sheet, basically we show our footprint that, you know, Manny was mentioning that we comply with all the square footage requirements, FARs, lot coverages, you know, green areas, et cetera. On the next sheet, we have, and this will be A1, we have, you know, just to clarify, all the square footage that were counted, because I remember last week, you know, like the final bottom was kind of questioned if it was counted into the square footage, so we added this graphic showing which are the areas that were counted on the different, you know, elements. The sheet number A2, this one, and this is, you know, a little bit of a contentious. I would say, oh, tricky part of this being this is a brand-new project and having new regulations, you know, as far as the finished floor elevations that we have to comply now with a higher FEMA elevation, and that, of course, makes all the houses, you know, look much taller because they're two feet higher than all the other houses that have been approved in the area. That being said, here I have a comparison of the footprint of the three houses, our project in the center, the house to the east and the house to the west. And as you can see, we are in between the two houses as far as the footprint of the house. Of course, the finished floor, because we are under new regulations, you know, is much higher, so that itself is going to make the house look a little bit taller. But in addition to that, you know, the city also requires us, because we're raising the house an extra two feet, we have to reduce our high restriction by two feet. So our high restriction for this house is 33 feet instead of the 35 that are allowed by the town, and we comply with that high restriction. So technically, if you use all the FEMA, we're still at the same high elevation restriction. I just wanted to point that out on that aspect. Then we have, you know, two sheets showing all our glass openings and mason reopenings on the building on the front, on the rear elevation, and on the side elevations, you know, showing that we do, you know, comply with all the minimum requirements as far as mason reopenings of the building. Roof plans, like I said, the only major changes that from, I mean, the northeast corner of the house that we just simplified without having that cantilever on the second floor, and added the additional glass on the garage and on the office on the north side of the house. Roof plan, I think it would go second floor. There was no changes beside, you know, some additional glass on the bedroom. We flipped that so we can add more glass on, again, on the northeast side of the house, and you're going to see on the elevation. Roof plan, like I said, on the next sheet, we went from the concept of having parapets on the north and the south side of the house to have, you know, hip roofs to reduce the mass and the amount of concrete that, you know, we have on those two elevations that the impact, you know, all the surrounding houses, the street view, et cetera. Then on the elevation sheet, that will be the next one. Here we can see what we have done with the roofs, and in addition to creating this hip roofs in lieu of the parapets, we also reduced the second floor beam elevation to reduce that mass of the second floor to comply, you know, basically with what the board was recommending, what the homeowners, you know, our neighbors were, you know, saying about the house that it's too massive, et cetera, compared to all the houses in the surrounding area. Another, on the side elevation, another topic that was discussed on the last meeting is the amount of how, you know, the west elevation, how much of a second floor mass we have. So I created this quick, you know, dimensions and showing how much percentage is actually two-story and how much percentage is either one-story or open deck or roof deck. As you can see, you know, the center portion, it's about 37%. That is the only area that is two-story. The front is all one-story, and the back we have a flat deck, you know, a terrace that is, of course, one-story, and then we have the roof deck that, even though it has a second floor roof, you know, it's all open with a different treatment, with a stone treatment. So it breaks down that elevation. It doesn't look like a two-story, you know, full-length elevation. Then we have, you know, some rendering showing a little bit, you know, the amount of glass that we added to, you know, the front, east, and west elevations in the garage and on the office area, and how much the, you know, I mean, how the parapets were detected, not detected, they were taking off and basically replaced by hip roofs, and how much that shows how the house, you know, lowers its impact as far as the mass of the house. Then, of course, we have, you know, on the next page, we have, you know, a comparison, you know, of all the properties around our area, and that we have to submit. And of course, this house is, they're one-story and they're at a much lower elevation, so we're going to have that impact because of, you know, the new requirements that we have and because it's a new project. In addition to that, I wanted to show some of the newer projects in the area, in Hudson Street, Ocean Avenue, Coconut, and Ocean Avenue, showing houses that they have these two-story elements, long elevations, you know, big masses, like the one, for example, in 19 Hudson, same street, similar concept as far as having this front two-story and then the long house towards the back. So looking at this, our, we believe our design, you know, fits within the houses that have been approved in the neighborhood. I understand on the second page, there's houses, a conflicting house in the area, but it's also part of, you know, our neighborhood and where we're building our house, so we need to take that into consideration as well. If you have any questions, that is basically our presentation, my presentation.
I wanted to commend your group for listening to this commission last month, because I think you made a significant change in the elevation design. The roof looks, in my opinion, much better. The glazing is much better, so I wanted to start off, and thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Well, Mark, let's just go first. Let's go to the public comment first, if we could, please. Okay? Thank you very much. You're welcome. Yep.
Terry Brown, I believe this was the case that they talked about a need for additional landscaping or different landscaping because of the row palm trees that looks like going into a racetrack or some other artificial facility. And I know that one of the things that the town commission would like to have you look at is landscaping trees and more shade trees, bigger trees. So that was a concern that I think some of the folks had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Before I get started, I have a diagram.
No, can you put name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Richard Zizo. I live at One Hudson Avenue. My father and I are the designers and builders of the house at One Hudson for our family. I, one of the commissioners last week was astounded enough to take, question the ability of a car to turn into the garage, and some diagrams that I have show that a compact car might be able to, with very cautiously, use the third garage closest to the street. That's because the envelope is so large. But I have a diagram that maybe Kelly can, and she can show you. This is a cat drawing, and showing you footage of what's necessary for a compact car to turn and enter a garage. Would you accept that, please? Thank you. My comments are general. Bella Homes is, was responsible for 113 Island Drive South. That was also a five-bedroom, five-bath. And that house never got built. It's a debacle, and the people in the area have to suffer with that for however long. That is now, it looks to me like a demolition site, and it's been flipped to a Nevada LLC, and the, has a Louisville, Kentucky mailing address. So that, somebody's hiding behind that, those LLCs. Simply put, the parcels and spec homes are just, you know, fast dealing for investment purposes. And it's not really, to my estimation, that the town of Ocean Ridge, it just doesn't fit. What can be expected from the house? Because it's not designed for a block. It's not designed for a single-family residential zone. It really belongs in the estate zone. My, again, my estimation, my opinion. A survey of all the houses on Hudson Avenue, including both sides of the block and the four houses on the intercoastal, as listed in PAPA, show that though there are several examples of two- and three-million-dollar appraised properties, there are none that are eco-luxury class as touted by the builder and the designer. And the resurrected Phil's project on Island shows that sometimes the economics don't work and don't make it, and then everyone's left with the fallout. So as a matter of fact, I looked at the mode of the Hudson Avenue valuations on PAPA, and this mega complex will come in at over four times, over four times, the cost of 90% of the houses on Hudson Avenue. That's astronomical. It's, it doesn't appear to be a family residence to me and the neighbors, and just, I know I'm, I'm overtime, but I will submit this. The house doesn't fit, and it's going to be grossly overpriced. It might be a white elephant like the one on the corner, which is for sale and hasn't seen any activity. It may turn out to be an empty house in a beach rental, or B&amp;B with no breakfast. Possibly, it may be even, it may never be completed, and it might even be flipped to another LLC, to another investment that becomes more valuable. The far calculations may or may not be accurate anymore if the upper terrace and the lower loggia are ever, ever in the future enclosed. That's, and I would ask Christie to look into maybe a cash bond to guarantee completion and a sale to a buyer, and also a restriction such that the terrace and the loggia, if this goes forward, can never be enclosed and used as living space. I mean, just asking, just a request.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Any further public comment?
Can I make a comment today?
I don't see why not.
Sure.
The applicant can come up, right? Christie, make a comment, absolutely.
Thank you. Steve Patrissi, Bella Homes. I'd like to make a comment regarding that, so just to start off, I've done several, several projects successfully in Ocean Ridge, started with 117 Mall and Drive. We did that very successfully. I purchased that property. I sold it, built it, sold it, so that went very successful. This project that you talked about is 113 Island Drive. That was a project that sat there for a while because there's more situations, circumstances than it was, which I'll explain to you in a minute. But I am working currently on 6107 North Ocean right now, which is permanent. It's going up right now. There's construction going on, so it's going to be a very successful site. Bella Homes has been around since 2014, over 10 years. It's done over 100 homes successfully. 113 Island Drive happens to be the only one, is the only one, but we had some things that we had to deal with with Ocean Ridge. We had it on the market, and at that time, we were either going to sell it now. We had other projects going on at the time, but right now, we have, we sold it recently. We have a client that's going in for approval for plans again because of unfortunate lapse of one over 180 days. Rich Brummer has taken over the project. Very, you know, he knows the town of Ocean Ridge very well, so we're working with the current owner right now, and we're looking to get building plans back into the city as soon as possible, so we are working on that currently, so to get that project up going again. But like I said, Bella Homes has been around. We are there. We're not like, we're just going to fly-by-night company, so I just want to.
Do you have any specific comments to this application?
No, I look forward to getting it approved and getting started on it right away, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? We'll close public comment. Board comments?
Yeah, just for the house, they did exactly what everybody asked them for. House looks good. It's going to be hard to make anything fit into the old neighborhood since we're getting, everything's getting higher with the flood zone. They have their percentages, large lot right there. They have their percentages, you know, as far as Manny and everybody else checked out. Corey, everybody checked everything out. It's a nice house, and can't, can't, you know, times are changing. We're not going to have all these little houses that are lower, going to be gone in some years due to flood. Yeah, not going to be insurable, everything else, so. It's the future. My opinion, it's the future. Sorry to say, but, you know, other people won't agree, but not a bad spot, beautiful house, and I'm, put me on boat and go forward.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments?
No, I think, I guess you want to. I hear what the, what the person, Mrs. Zizo, said about the issues that you raised, and I, I think we need to address some of those things, especially being one of the ones that are affected by 113 Island Drive. And I will, I will tell you that I hope that some action is taken to address those so it doesn't happen in the future, fully respecting what happened in that incident, which is a little different than a normal course, so I can't put the fault also on the developer. So, I mean, there's issues there, but there are also issues that need to be addressed by the board. That being said, hearing all that, I think the design and everything else that you did was really nice. It's going to have an impact in the future, and it can be very difficult to keep a standard when everything's being redeveloped. It's very difficult to do that. But I think what you did was very nice, and I hope you go forth expeditiously and with due regard to the neighbors and in respect to the town. At one point in time, we did have that by a lot of the contractors and developers here, and I hope it comes back. So, that being said, I would go for it.
Thank you, Ken. Mark?
No further comments?
Okay. My only comment was, we did make a landscape. Thank you, Terry. We made some landscape comments previously at the other previous meeting, and I didn't see those incorporated into your current plan, the new plan, right? And talking about raising the height of the bushes a little bit to give a little bit of transparency to the cars in the parking lot, the parking area, et cetera. And I think Terry had, we had heard too about a shade tree, you know, having any type of shade trees on the property for not just today, but down the road would be nice as well. So if there's an opportunity for you to incorporate those into your plan, I would love to see that myself, right? And.
Just to, you know, the landscaping, I apologize. I didn't mention that on my presentation. These are, you know, the renderings, you know, the renders, they take into representation a little bit of what it is.
Yes.
In fact, those shrub around the parking area, they're much taller, so they will cover, you know, all the cars. You're going to see crowning a little bit of the roof of the car. And yes, we mentioned and we talked with the landscaper, you know, as far as probably having another shade tree on that corner. So that probably is going to get incorporated during the process, and we probably, what we could do is submit that, you know, with a permit, there's going to come another, you know, landscape set of drawings that we can have that incorporated there, so you can see it. But unfortunately, you know, the renderings, they think one thing, and, you know, the landscaper thinks something else. So, but yes, those, all that shrub are. else. So, but yes, those, all that shrub around the, the outdoor parking area, it's gonna be much taller. It's about three, four feet tall.
Okay. Great.
Well, now that you mention that, Chairman, where is the landscape plan?
There's, I didn't see though, they had one on the previous application and there's not a, there's not an updated plan on the new application.
I thought, I thought, I can see it in here and I thought so, maybe you were gonna come back with a landscape plan at another time. But it really should be, if you're resubmitting, I think in the future, if we can make sure that that, if that is your intent to incorporate the landscape plan, that it be at the same time. Because right now, we have nothing to approve. So I think but for the landscape plan, which you can bring back at another time.
Yes.
Which is not approved, I will not go along with that because I don't see it.
Yeah. We were going with the original landscape plan.
Okay. Then I'll defer to the rest of the.
Well, the comments, the comments from the previous were, where there were some, there were comments and Terry brought them up. There were comments, the landscape, previous landscape plan.
Yeah. So a lot of times on the renderings, we show things a little bit lower just so you see the house.
Yeah.
In reality, the landscape is in time. So.
Excuse me, Mark?
Yeah. I was just gonna mention, I was just gonna mention to Ken that we did see the landscape plan at our last meeting and that's where the comments came from. So they, it sounds like they complied with what the commission last month requested.
Okay. So.
But you, you don't have knowledge of that. I understand. I understand this.
Can we have an affirmative statement on, on the record that they're going to comply with?
Can we put that in the, can we put that in, let's put that in the motion?
Condition?
Yes.
As a condition.
Yeah. The quasi judicial hearing is closed and we've had this deliberation. So I will entertain a motion on item number three by the commission.
Ken, do you wanna make it with your caveats or your amendments?
Yeah. I move to approve the, the design, I guess, what you're saying, right? That's what we're approving. Approving, they have to go through permitting and everything else. But the design conditioned upon acceptance of the prior comments under the landscape plan that was previously submitted.
And if I may add that the hedging in the, to the east of the parking area will be a minimum of, was it three feet or four feet we heard?
It was in that, three to four.
It's an average three to four.
Okay. Three to four feet. And that you're gonna add at least one large shade tree at which side of the block?
That's gonna be on the east side of the.
On the east side of the lot.
Just away from the drain field.
So a little more specificity in it.
Okay.
Can we incorporate those two together? Kelly, is that a, okay. Like a vote?
That's a second.
A second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Discussion action item number three, or number four. Review assignments with the town commission. Ken, we heard prior to you getting here today that what, and you probably, you might know more than, than we do on this, that the commissioners have asked us to take this list and prioritize, I believe. That's what, that's what Lynn and asked us to do, right? So take these 13 items, excuse me, 14 items and prioritize our number one through five or number one through whatever, right?
Prioritize how you would like to address them, which, you know, you could take a large one and make that number one, a couple of easier ones to knock off and make those your number two, three, just so that as each month goes by, we know that we can put one or two of these on the agenda for you guys to discuss and start moving our way through what the commission would like me to work on. You know, it takes big bites, you know, they say, you know, with an elephant, you can eat it. You just gotta take it a bite at a time. So just kind of.
Shields. Both Ken and I, and I believe Steve attended that meeting.
Yes.
The workshop. And I just went and thought we just categorized my A, B, and C and then prioritize those because you've got quite a number of things to try to prioritize, one through, what was it, 14?
Okay.
I, if I can.
Yes.
I don't, I didn't agree with the spitball approach that was taken, quite frankly. So I would much rather see a more organized approach to this.
From our standpoint.
I would be, you know, it's just in danger of my, my being.
Yes.
And so I would divide it in administrative and then let's deal with all the issues concerning administrative issues. That could be the permit fees. That could be the process. That could be whatever, you know, whatever's on this list and whatever else we deem appropriate to advise the commission, since we are planning and we are advisory board, to advise them on what issues that, that they should address as well. They can reject them, of course. But I think we had to do it administratively and then, then code specific in terms of certain wall heights and whatever the case may be, whatever code specific provisions that we need to address and we should examine those issues possibly separate and apart. And we're gonna need some help from staff to put these together and to delineate and organize what code sections and issues we should be examining within that process. And then last is, would be an overall broad category of things that we feel that need to be addressed that, that aren't necessarily on this list. That's how I would divide it up. And I think that's a, that's an easy way to proceed and might be more efficient to do so.
So outline again for us, please. You're talking about construction code and construction items, code items, right? I mean, construction activities, I'll call it construction, the construction activities, because there's a number of these that deal with what's happening on the site, the construction activities, what goes on with the, the code itself, right?
Correct.
And your last piece of that would be what?
Things that aren't addressed. Because there are things here that what they've done is they've, they've narrowed in specifics, right?
Yes.
But there are things outside of those specifics that need to be addressed that coordinate with the specifics, if you will. But I think at some point in time, we, we have to take a look, a little bit broader viewpoint towards some of these issues. For example, FAR, revisit RMM, RHM, those things should be in a third category, if you will, that are more broad based, that affect the entire town broadly, more zoning as opposed to a specific code pertaining to turf.
Yes.
Okay.
I get, I get.
So three simple categories of, I'm thinking this aloud.
Yes.
Sorry. But process, specific code construction, if you want, or, you know, delineation of specifics that are going on in the code. And then thirdly, more broad based zoning, the FAR, the things of that nature. And, and I would put, for example, the 50%, the things considered with 50% in the process portion of it.
Yes.
How they, how do they come about making these determinations? Because I, I am familiar with both standards, South Florida and FEMA. And there are some wiggle room that historically, I should say historically, the past few years, we have not, they've been very strict on. And I think for the benefit of the town, it can be a little bit more liberal.
Okay.
Especially if we're encouraging people to rehabilitate homes and to fix up homes and to reduce massing, we have to look at the impact of that. Because it's, we can't have, we can't have both.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta look at that and say, oh, for example, there are certain things that we can take out of the calculation that they both allow that are within the municipality control concerning health safety issues, like hurricane windows and things that we don't have to necessarily go into those calculations to enable a home to be rehabilitated without total destruction. So these are things that I think we should work on.
I'm gonna agree on that because I'm, you know, I'm a builder here in town and I look at people coming in with houses and they wanna renovate it. And I'm like, hey, you know, you can go get a FEMA appraisal or whatever, you know, FEMA appraisal or whatever it is to, cause if you look on Palm Beach County, these houses are worth 150,000 or 200,000. You go sit there and like, all right, so you got 50%. You can put 100,000 into this house really, or you gotta rip it down. There's damn no wiggle room to be able to try to just rehab an old house, you know? But then, you know, they can't, nothing they can do with them. It's like, you got this built new. Can we do this to the house? No, we just got built new, ripped it down, got this built new. There's no, then you can't just take an old house, clean it up. People say, oh, let me just raise the roof a little bit. You could keep some of the old houses. But that being said, some of the old houses that are maybe at a seven foot elevation are okay, but some of these at a four footer elevation should be torn down because they're way out, you know, they're causing an impact on our streets. We can't raise the street.
Well, I think those are good issues, right? And I think you could have your cake and eat it too on those. Because you could say, listen, if we address those drainage issues for those smaller homes, if we can address it. If not, then you gotta, we can't do it. They can't help you. But there are things that we, avenues that we can look at that might assist in, in both.
Um, real quick, from my, my standpoint, I've been resident here for 24 years. I've enjoyed this, being on this board for 12 months. I have heard a lot from the public and seen a lot, I think, over that 12 month period. I kinda look at what do we, what do we need to look at immediately? And I think the, I use the term when I put my, the construction process, right? The, the staging of construction, equipment, personnel, et cetera. I think we need to look at immediately because we've heard from our residents that this is a continual problem, especially on some of the smaller streets on the south end of the town. I, I don't know how they, you know, these, these streets are basically one, one lane, they are one-way streets. How you're gonna build a house and have construction materials, personnel there, equipment, everything else. So I'd like to look at, I'd like to think that we should look at what is important right now. What can, what can we do to help our residents today? And that's one of the things I talked about. I talked about, like my, I've got a few builder friends up in Palm Beach. I mean, now those, the code up, the, the construction requirements are there are crazy land, but still, you know, they make you, you know, you can only have so many vehicles. They be, need to park on the, on the, on the premises. And everything after that, you know, they park at the park here and you have to shovel them over to your, to your property. I know Steve, that's a pain in the butt for you and these other construction people, but I've heard a lot over the 12 months about the construction process and how difficult it is on the neighbors in the neighborhood. So to me, that's a, that's a, a big point. Certainly we talked about, and I view that as a priority one. And someone's got to work through something like that right away. You know, just of the plan review, the parking, the landscaping, location of the equipment, you know, those, those types of things. It feels like the drainage, you know, we've got that kinda under grips. And, and so the next thing I look at is the seawall. We have a real problem with the seawall. I live on, on an island. And Ken, you and I talked about this a little bit, just, just on, as we walk up and down the street. But you know, like I looked at Broward, Fort Laurel Broward building code and they, they have three conditions, right? To, you know, to any new activity, you raise the seawall to a new height, right? So they have that number one. When a seawall is in significant disrepair, more than 50 minutes structure, make you replace it. They actually have a third one, or when the property owner has been titled for flow breaching the seawall and impacting the neighboring property or right of way, which is what we have on our street, right? So by the two properties in the middle of the street not raising their seawall, it, it, it puts us in a, you know, in a tough position, the rest of the residents here. So for, for me, those, I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying. I think you should break it apart, but I'd love to see it to be in a position where we could say, hey, these are important issues and need to be dealt with day one, right? And I, again, I get back to the construction process and our residents. I think we have to, and the commission has to do something on that immediately.
So I don't disagree with you. I, I will tell you what we're, what we're finding, and this is the comment I made earlier, is that like, like all things, sometimes you have to legislate.
Unfortunately.
Responsibilities. Because, you know, I've been here a long, long time and I remember a time when contractors and developers had some respect for everything going on. They would wash the street.
Yes.
Before they went home. They would understand that the parking was an issue. They would make sure somebody was there, was directing some sort of traffic. I remember these times, right? And unfortunately, they're coming in and not doing that. So I agree with you. We need to legislate morality, if you will, and responsibility towards those things. And I think that, that can be one of the first things we do. And that could be in the process portion of it. I mean, because we don't really have that many process issues, but that is a process issue. And I think that can be addressed. We did not talk about the specifics, just for the record, of seawalls.
No, we didn't.
Collusion here. But I do agree with the concept that seawall takes a different, different light. And I think because that is a, that is a protective barrier, not only to the home, but to the neighbors and to the, to the overall development. So I think that does take on. And I do agree that those three issues that, that you develop has to be looked at because the simple example is Island Drive, with especially the one near, closest to the bridge that has had, if that breaches, that whole island is done.
Yes.
So we have to be, we have to take a little bit more particular attention to it. And as, as we go on and, and listen, climate change is real, but it's, you know, and sea rise is real. And it's gonna have an impact, even though, like I'll say this for the record, back in the, in the nineties, when we first lived here, the sea, the water was coming over our seawall halfway up. And I haven't seen that in a long time, but now I'm seeing it again. So it did used to happen. And I tell people all that time, this is not new that the A1A was flooded. This is not new that the water breached the seawall. This is not new. But we have to realize that it might be happening more frequently and understanding that. And there's no reason not to address these things for the benefit of everybody. So I, I don't disagree with you. If you wanna, if you wanna piece some of those things out immediately, I have no problem with it.
So during the town commission workshop, I think some easy items to knock off, which are current and happen on a, on a frequent basis, is dealing with the permit fees, the comment response period. I think those are two items that we should be able to knock out pretty quick, that they see, you know, you know, every week that probably need to be dealt with. And then I agree with you totally on the staging issue. I think we've got some property owners that are really being impacted by that that shouldn't be. And then the, and then the seawall. So maybe, you know, from at least getting started with this, maybe those, those are four we could consider if anybody wants to add on it. And then my question is, how do we expect to do this? Is this gonna be one item per meeting? Two items per meeting? How are we gonna chip away at this? Any suggestions or?
Probably a couple per meeting, depending on, you know, the, the amount of information or how large of an item it is. It could be one and it could be two or three.
So perhaps have one of these four or two of these four on our next meeting? Maybe we could.
Well, once you just take the first three.
Permit fees is easy.
You can do the first three. And those are, those are all process things.
And then, and then the seawall.
And understanding that the staff, we have a relatively limited amount of staff to do this work. So in these processes, a lot will depend upon, I guess Lindsay, maybe? I don't know. And Manny and Cory and, and obviously Tara or Lisa or somebody. But, so they're gonna have to have some time to coordinate the effort to bring it to us so that we can address it as well.
I think they've been dealing with this on a regular basis. They just haven't had the guidance from, you know, what should be done. So.
Again, if we gave them the first four items that we talked, these four items we talked about and said, this is the four priorities that we'd like you to work on. Is that what they're kinda looking for from us? I support that.
You mean, four might be a little much. Should we be hitting three or?
No, just one, two, and three.
Yeah. I'd say three, enough.
You don't want to throw the seawall height in there again? And then take five and six, combine, take five and six and combine and throw it in there.
Yeah.
I'd love to do that. Have those four items. One, two, three, and then combine five and six together. Can we do that, Kelly?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
On five and six, the seawalls, it might be.
On five and six, the seawalls, it might be helpful to hold off until we have the public input for the new comp plan updates. Because that would give the public opportunity to input on the seawalls as well. So trying to, you know, capitalize on the fact that we are going through that comp plan update. Some of this is stuff that I think Cory will be addressing, from the seawall heights to some of the zoning ordinances, like 12 and 13, as well as number 10. Those could all be things that are sort of addressed in that comp plan, getting, you know, public feedback on what the community themselves wants, which then gives you as a board far greater understanding of what the community wants, not just what you might have heard from different projects.
I agree in part and disagree in part. Now, where I disagree in part is that the public comment on seawall height and things that are engineering is not a public comment issue. It's a, that is a different type of issue, because they could say, we don't want any seawalls. Well, no, obviously, that's not the issue. So I don't think that is relevant to the comp plan, having gone through the comp plan many times myself, so, or the planning process. Those are, those are item specifics that engender the safety and welfare of the community, not necessarily up for public comment, although you have to But, so I disagree. I think that's something that we can tackle and move forward with. If you want, you can do, why don't we do three, five, and six at the next meeting? That addresses what your concern is, Chairman? And then the following meeting, maybe not in June, but give them July, if you can bring it back in July. Who's here in July?
Hopefully.
Okay, because June is only a couple of weeks away.
So we're not doing one and two?
Ken, why not one and two, because those are happening every day here.
Because we can't do five items in one meeting.
But as a priority, these are, these are things that come up constantly, as opposed to seawalls. I mean, I agree with
Are we doing, I'm confused, are we, are we, are we talking about these items another meeting, or are we just taking these and saying to, back to the commission, this is what are our priorities?
No, no, we now just grab them and just run with them, and say, this is what we're going to address, and advise the
Yeah.
the commission. So that's what, I mean, what they've given us is a general directive
Yeah.
to look at these items. We on our own could add or delete from this, and advise, because we're a planning council, and to give advice towards that end. So if we choose to, and I, whichever ones you want to prioritize in the, in the near term, give them, and give the staff enough time to develop, because what I want to see, quite frankly, is when, when it comes up, I want to see a historical context. I want in front of me the particular zoning code, the recommendations of engineering, the recommendations of planning and zoning. I want to see their recommendations so that we have full information, so we can have informed consent about what we're doing.
Okay.
Right? And that takes time.
Yep.
These things aren't just willy-nilly. Takes time for them to develop and to bring forth, and I think it's helpful. And I think if we have a goal of maybe starting it in July, or August, or whatever you want to do, whatever Lynn can guide in terms of what their capability in helping us through that process. But as Mark said, you know, if you want to do, whatever you want to state, whatever you want to do first, I'm not, I don't really care.
I was just thinking, like, permit fees, and maybe some of the turf ordinance, that's quick and easy, should bang up the, you know, the other ones are gonna be more complicated. We did sit there for hours.
Yeah, but here's the problem.
Try to make
Here's the problem, once you go into the turf ordinance,
Yeah.
you might as well talk about the trees.
Yeah.
And once you get, you know, so we have to, we have to narrow it down.
Yeah.
Because if we start spitballing, we're gonna be all over the board.
Yeah, like
It's just, it's not gonna be fun.
Well, let's just start with the first three, then, you know? I mean, does that make sense, guys? Why don't we start with the first three? That gives it, is that, you know? And we'll create the first three, and then we'll create another three going forward.
I'm okay with that.
Is that good?
Yeah, and I just want to add that Ken, you came up with some, you know, remarks with regard to make sure we have the research done, we have some things to look at, that are empirical data, that we can make some decisions from. But I'd also like to see with that some benchmarking of other communities, that we think are pure communities, so that we can, instead of reinventing the wheel every time, it's often that, you know, a city down the street, or two cities away, have already been through this, and we probably could use a lot of that.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Or the staff could use that, too.
And a lot of them have.
Yeah. Yes.
And in some ways, we're a leader in some of those things, too.
Yeah, I'm sure we are.
At least historically, we have. Yeah, I'm good with that.
So do we, do we make a motion for this, or do we just simply say that, we're gonna ask the staff to please review those top, the one, number one, two, and three?
Right.
And prepare a report, I'm sure, when you can.
Do you think you can bring it back by July? Okay.
By July? Wonderful. Thank you. Commissioner comments?
I see the next meeting is June 18th, I will not be here.
Nor will I be here.
I'll be out of the country.
And I'm likely not gonna be here, but I might be able to be here, so.
I'll be here in June, I won't be here in July.
Okay.
Is there anything that's scheduled for June that we know of right now?
Not at the moment.
Okay. All right, so what I would suggest, since it doesn't sound like it might have a majority here, maybe, if there is something that has to be, come up, that we can always call a meeting and schedule a date, and so if you have something that needs to be addressed for June, we can always, you can always call it, and we can, you know
See if we get a quorum.
At the workshop, they had a discussion about video conferencing, and the ability to help those who needed to be out for a reason be able to check in that way. And I don't know how long that process is gonna take, but is there any, like, ETA on the equipment that would be required to do it satisfactorily? So a couple of months, maybe, you have an idea? It just might make things smoother, you know?
I don't know why neighborhood and community is doing it, because I've been involved in those, those sessions, so I don't see why the commission would have been that, in fact, that next meeting, I'll try to say it, it's done all the time.
Anything else, Steve? Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Have a nice, have a nice day, everybody.
Thanks.
You need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.